Welcome everybody. Good evening, everyone. And before we officially start, I'm just going to hand over to the town clerk. He just wants to tell a couple of words and then we will carry on with the meeting as planned.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I would just like our new member of staff, Jackie, to stand up if you wouldn't mind. Jackie is working after our media, so it's website and Facebook and anything else we can throw at her. So she's only just started, which is underway already. So thank you, Jackie, for being here tonight.
Welcome from us all. Okay, we've started right another one. Apologies for absence and reasons intended. I know we've got one, but we are missing a few others tonight as well.
Phil, what do you think is this apology?
Missing a car.
Yep.
Okay. Item number two, declarations of interest. Is this in the filter bookie that needs to? Perfect, okay. Item number three, to receive a report from Squadron Leader here. I'll hand it over to Brian again, because Squadron Leader is unable to make the call. He's just had a small report for us all.
Yeah, apologies from Squadron Leader. He's come down with a lardie that shows one or two of us have been suffering. Right. Operations and exercises. It is noted that all three fighter squadrons completed routine training sorties in the UK throughout May to retain competency in the currency on the aircraft. During the Memorial Day weekend, the 492nd Squadron participated in a flyover of Cambridge University and the 494th participated in a flyover over Normandy. Forty-eight fighter wings suspended flying activities over the bank holiday weekend. Community matters. Suffolk Show, which was 31st of May to the 1st of June. They provided large footprint in the military village of Suffolk Show. Security forces, military working dogs, special ops, medical fire, flying squadrons, logistics and fitness capabilities were all represented at the show. In addition, the honoured guard and the marching continuum of US personnel also participated in the pageant parade at the Suffolk Show. In respect of the issue of aircraft noise, Squadron Leader spoke with the 48th Fighter Wing Operations Group and the runway 06 departure routes are currently being reviewed by the team to see whether high-power climbs over Brandon can be reduced when operation of runway 06. An update is to be provided at the next meeting. And that concludes Squadron Leader's notes that have been passed to you.
Okay. That update has opened up a brandy. It's been dissipated with quality for the last 10 days.
You read my ass on Saturday night. It was leaking.
Yeah, well, you're in the van, maybe we aren't.
Okay. Well, we'll move on. Item number four, to receive the further sign of minutes of the Brown Town Council meeting that will be held on Monday, the 9th of May 2022. I'll propose them.
Second cop.
All right, I pick your call.
Yeah, number 17. Brandon Remembrance Playfield's farm, etc. He's got down there, he carries unanimous. And actually, it's 10, 4, count to 11, two's proposal, 3, 4 against, and 1 in front. So I don't know how you can get unanimous.
Where does it say unanimous?
No, it doesn't.
Number 17.
So what counts have you got? Because I'll have to go back and check.
It's on you, it's on you, it's on you.
It's on you. And also...
Because we have a name vote, if I remember wrong.
Yes, it says a name vote.
Oh, sorry, right. Sorry.
It's a five by five, it should say...
That will be...
It should say 1, 2.
Sorry, beg your pardon, we missed it. Thank you. Notes.
It's a 10, 3, 1.
And also, it was a little bit ambiguous regarding number 17. When it states to approve Brandon Remembrance Playfield's grant because of a 50% of the allocation, it was proposed by Council Everton and suggested by Council Witten that the matter being deferred be in further discussion with the trustees of the Remembrance Playfield. Council mechanic asked what the injections were to the payment being deferred. A general discussion then ensued. The council mechanic requested that a name vote take place. I would have put something like, "Council Everton's proposal was then put to the vote", because it seems like we was voting regarding the top one. Brandon Remembrance Playfield's request the 50% of the allocation. If you see what I mean? Because when I say my name against... It seemed like I was against with two other councillors and paying the 50% to Remembrance Playfield. So I'm just saying that perhaps an extra sentence could have been put in there to be a bit more fair enough for the situation.
So what... It is badly worded, I'm sorry.
I think if I had a... Yeah. If we'd maybe just had a little sense of vote at place to defer like that, yeah?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll manage it. Call them then, thank you.
Anything else, so we move on to the next question. What, like, what, yeah? Is that it? Anybody else want to comment on the minutes? Okay, well, we'll vote on it then. Thumbs in favour of the minutes?
Did we have a proposal in a second?
Yeah, I propose. Second, two. But straight away, of course. Okay, item number five, matters arising from information exchange at the town council meeting on the 9th of May. Any matters arising?
I think there was a chair on May. Last month, we had a man came in who was concerned about a place for his child at the school. And it looked as though there was certain cases where they were in a position to help here. I just wondered whether they did help.
One of those councillors isn't here, is she? Councillor Blackwell was helping with him, but...
Do we know how far she's got to deal with this issue?
No. No, in fact, we've got her email, Brian, and just see if we can get her up to me and that, so we can pass it on to councillor Gary.
I will pass it to you then, the information that I got, all right?
If you could pass it on, that would be brilliant.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Go, councillor, go.
In the public forum, number 10. Councillor Palmer announced that the issue of the local council payment for street lighting will be coming before cabinet and should be resolved by the end of 2023. Is that a mistake and should that read 2022?
Councillor Palmer?
They did say 2022, but don't hold your breath.
Because it stated here 2023. So, no, 18 months time.
Should be 2022.
Right. I will double check that. I'm sure it was 2023 and I think that we double check it. Can you get us, councillor, to... I found it surprising yourself actually to say 2022, but I...
I would like to say something about, but on paragraph 15, we do have something lagged on regarding the planning. Of... Number 14 says tonight, minutes of planning committee of the 6th of June 2022.
Yep.
But I'd like to say something regarding that, so should I wait till that, or can I say it now?
Could we say now if we liked to? I think we must connect, yeah. The planner was just...
Sorry, which section are we talking about, councillor?
It's something with the planning meetings from last month.
Fifteen, I thought, I don't know.
To note the mention of the planning committee meeting. Yep, go on.
Could the planning committee just sort of go through on 5 stroke 1, planning applications, land off Chalk Road, Brandon. I take it that is small fennel lane?
No.
No, no. Could somebody tell me then? It says change of use of land for dog walking purposes. And you're talking about vehicles and toilets, et cetera. So where is this bit of ground up there? This what? I know where Chalk Road is, but talk about a little bit.
Right up the top, this was last month.
What? Or the timber yard of ashes?
Further down, towards, further, towards the town or something as such. Go on.
Where the railway has access, that trap there?
No. Yes, well, it's just, as you go up Chalk Road, turn, sharp corner.
Yes.
Just up there on the left.
Know where Georgina lives? It's 100 yards before Georgina, on the left hand side. What was he actually proposing there then? I've read this several times, but I couldn't really make out the title of it.
Dog training.
It's a dog training on walking side.
Bob, did you want to answer as chairman of the planning, did you want to tell him, tell anybody this all back?
No.
Well, you said you know it. Well, I'm not chairman of the planning, I can't stand out. I'm planning. We support the chat, we support it.
Well, you said you know it. Item number 11, have it show you where it is. Yeah, all right, yeah.
I'll talk to you later.
Yeah, yeah, please, into the mouth of the man.
Talk to you later.
Okay, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll move on. Item number six, urgent business. And the item, Chairman considers for urgent business. I've just got one little thing I want to say. I'd like to thank everybody, all the councillors that helped organise the Queen's Jubilee Weekend. Dennis sitting down there needs a big thanking for his work with the Beacon and also the town keepers for helping him along the way. It looked fantastic. It all went down really well, very good reports, so... Yep, and everybody up here, there was a lot of work, the town keeper's done a lot of work. There was a lot of work gone into the whole Jubilee effort, so I'd just like to thank you really for all the hard work.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, well, I didn't do too much. Any other urgent business? Ah, sorry, yes. Completely blanking my, could you remind me there, any? So we've had these local plan issues and I think councillor Everton went on a little tour about it and we've, you know, sort of come up with an suggestion that maybe we come, we put a... Our holiday because he grows up on the market square. If any councillors would like to attend, we're gonna, this Thursday?
This Thursday, yes.
Yeah, this Thursday and next, just to see if we get any public opinion on it really, just to see what...
Well, just pointing out to them that...
What it means, if they've got anything to talk about on it as well. But if you'd like to let them know, if you'd like to attend on the Thursday, just have a little, you know, to help chat to anybody if you bring it.
This Thursday, look.
This Thursday.
This Thursday, this way.
This Thursday.
At the market?
Yeah.
I'll probably do it.
It's just to help explain and show people, because it is quite a thing, the virtual, you know, leg of line. It's your headache.
Yeah, okay. Anything else? Okay. Item number seven, to receive a written report from the town clerk. Have all received it?
Yeah.
Any else to add? Okay. So we move on to item number eight. At this point, I would propose suspected standing orders for the public part of the meeting. So I propose, we've got a second look at that, the order. Okay, vote for that. Those in favour of suspended standing orders? So would any members of the public authority have any comments tonight? One, two, district councillors, county councillors, yeah? Do you want to go first then?
No, thank you, Mr Chair. County report, yeah. I'll start with some bad news. So Suffolk County Council did not get a grant from central government for the bus back better services, which is disappointing. So don't expect any improvements from rural services to take people from rural areas into towns. And what was frustrated is Norfolk County, Norfolk County got a grant from central government. So whether their lobbying was more efficient than ours, I'm not sure. That's the bad news. And I'd like to do a district report, if I may, Chair.
Go on.
I did visit the model engineers at Wheaton. We got an invite. There was, if you exclude councillor Moore, there was three others there. Phil Witten and vice-chair councillor Neve were there. I personally, I was quite impressed. I didn't realise the size of it. I didn't realise how much work has gone into it. I didn't realise that involved mothers and children and they were having a cracking good time up there. And I feel a bit ashamed of it, because I'm a Wheaton lad and that's been there since possibly the 90s or... That was probably there in conception of the steam engine, so I'll hold my hand up in apology that I didn't realise it was there. I hope that you go from strength to strength. And I hope that you have a great steam engine running, councillor Moore. And that concludes my report at county and district.
Okay, councillor Palmer, you want to finish the district, yeah? Okay, so, oh, just very quick.
Um, we saw it, Tom. Grass cutting doesn't seem to be happy with anyone, no way.
They're starting to die.
I don't want to interrupt your area then.
I have got.
I've seen what shot down each side of my house.
You have got grass, councillor, you're okay?
Not here, I've got a weed one.
The district councillor's got an email, the last part, last week, that they are coming out this week, possibly next week. We've had several of those emails and I'm gonna have to agree with councillor Moore. It's not good enough. We get the emails and they don't come out and do what they should do. So I will be in touch with head of operations for grass areas. And I hope that my fellow district councillors will do the same as well, not just leave it up to me. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Now, just one more point as well.
Do you want to come back with that?
Sure.
Uh, yeah, well, I'm on my turn as well. And I was hoping to come and cut the hayman down Brandon West ASAP and they told me they could be at this week. And their excuse was, "We can't cut because it's daffodil still staying".
Dervin Dog Aegis.
It's ridiculous, because I'm not that important.
Yeah, the Dog Aegis.
Councillor Darren?
Yeah, the other thing, um, we talked a little bit about the dog walking place down the bottom of Brandon. Thing is, this dog's movement is the normal dog was in the town and not picking up the dogs and that places again. It's getting absolutely disgusting, especially around my area, round the back where the old and community centre used to be. It seems to be an area where they just let the dogs run, do what they like, come back again. That's not, that's not, uh, well, that's not correct. I mean, I think we need a few more notices up or, you know, something needs to be done. I mean, it's, I mean, I walk my dog regularly, so I see it all and my dog doesn't, she doesn't do that stuff outside my house. But, you know, the people are now letting dogs run. There seems to be more and more dogs in the town and they bring them up and let them run, do what they want and then warbe, which is not, not nice. I don't know who we go to about that.
Which one you want to go first?
Did anyone solve the problem about who was weed killing? Weed spraying?
Yeah, I've got the schedule here, actually.
Yeah, but who was that the other day? Because we promised, the town keepers are all ready to do as councillor mechanic requested. But if it's only just been sprayed, we don't know, A, what with, and B, if our town keepers then sprayed again, we need to know what is being sprayed and when.
It's glyphosate, they're spraying, because they've not converted to eco-friendly. It was sprayed on the 18th of the 4th, according to the sheet, and our next one is due the 4th of the 7th.
No, they sprayed the other week, the other week?
Yes, we suspect, I did query this with them, and I suspect what's happened is that someone has gone a bit AWOL and not been spraying what we should have been doing. He shouldn't have been...
He wasn't in uniform, apparently.
No, he had a backpack.
Yes, but he wasn't in any uniform either.
Oh, right, well, he had a backpack and he, as far as I can work out, he should have been doing verges and not the high street.
It's not good enough, is it?
Well, it's not great.
Councillor, go.
Just going back on to the grass cutting. If the grass, by the time they get round to it, if the grass is as tall as I anticipated it might be, are they gonna do a little bit pressure about collection of the cuttings this year than they did last? Because last year was a fire risk.
Well, if you leave it until it's a yard tall, that will look a mess. They never take, they never take the cuttings away. They always cut the grass and leave it there. But, I mean, it's so elementary, isn't it? Don't let the grass grow that tall. It's just... But we get this problem year in and year out and they promise us everything and deliver very good. But I will talk to head of department, head of grass operation, tell them that we've been forgotten. I mean, if you go up the Thacker Road, well into close, if you go up Sandown entrance round there, I mean, if you're a short geezer like me, you can near enough to stand up in there, nobody will see it.
Very quickly, in the last one, yeah?
Well, I'm a, I'm a public path and there's members of the public that become out weeding and taking it, doing it themselves. Because it's got around the back of the road.
But as far as the weed killing goes, I mean, I should imagine it was West Suffolk Council. But I mean, if they're, if they're doing it, they've overlapped, you don't think we should complain? If they come out and they do, they still, they still use that glyco, what's that glyco spray?
Glyphosate.
Yeah, they haven't, they haven't discontinued the use of that. Suffolk County Council still approves that for another year, I think. But the high street is looking 100% better. That's the first glance. We haven't had any rotting weeds in that high street unless, and people have commented to councillor on how much cleaner it looks and long might continue. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Okay, now we'll move on to the public bit. Very quickly.
Just gonna say that at half past 12 today, a grass cutting machine was cutting the grass between Blackbird Avenue and Kingfisher. It was a heavy-duty one, but it was at half past 12 today.
Okay, ladies first, and then we'll get, yeah?
Early in February, I live at Thacker Road and it's to do with the grass, I think, but not just for now. The bit at the very end of the road before it turns into George Street and the wall goes in, so this bit of land is surrounded by two big walls and a big orchard tree. And I just think it's a disgrace to the town, because it's in a root-headed town, very near the town centre. It's just over a glade and the machine that comes in to cut it is too big. It does a small patch in the middle and all the weeds and ivy could all around it over there. Well, I wouldn't think of any glade in various elements that would have a disgrace like that. And it would be the same as they do in that thing, but it was a bit more...
Yeah, I think something we can definitely send an email to, our favourite piece.
Well, I know it is, yeah. I know exactly.
Also, the island there, it's scrappy grass at the best times. It just loose, it's disgrace. Whether the grasses cut or not makes no difference, it's just horrible. And one last thing.
Yes, you're right.
And the new houses are that from London Court.
Yep.
Well, they've planted originally very nice planters, plants, but nobody looks after them. Who is it, Kate, the housing that should be looking after them? Because they just let the weeds grow and they come along and kill them. So you're left with dead weeds. And why do you put public ground there by the same old house is beyond my understanding. And the builders, nearly, the builders have left, where they were building the house, Monkey's Island is now full of huge mature weeds, which eventually cleared out a bit more, that's all you can see, weed-spangled weeds. We're doing a bit of branding and blue to try and paint up the centre of town and all some of the bits that we need to... Not many houses that can help. Shocks that do not help with the grass.
Yeah, yes, that would be, yeah, so, subject to...
Um, thank you, Mr Chair. Graham, I think it might be worth giving Haybury Housing a court of justice, various evidence, because...
I'm trying to contact the G M O S, but they're not answering.
Yeah, but put them under...
Three, three houses.
Haybury, yeah, they're in Barry, Western Way. Give them a re, because they're responsible for the outdoor maintenance. I mean, what's happened there, there's, there's two residential units at the front and those units are for people with disabilities, yet they've given it the biggest gardens at the front. So that itself is not conducive to keep the maintenance of the garden. But perhaps, perhaps lecture, lecture them and tell them what the situation is. And I think I'd like for Kevin in and raising those, raising those issues.
Okay, what do we want to do instead?
I wonder if the town council could assist us in what is more an observation and a concern about parking to the entrance or property on the front path. We've had problems over the last two years and we've all saw them when the car park was going to be closed. The people thought we need spaces to park, that the business would need space for the vehicles to come and collect the meals. But that isn't happening in safety. It's really difficult sometimes to turn up and you can't get in. Thankfully, we, again, in foresight, we saw the keeping the rear access to our property open. It's been the only way we can get in, sometimes, regular, but sometimes. We spoke to the business over the last two years on two occasions and they assured us it wouldn't happen again. But it does too. And I just, I don't want to be someone who just goes and complains and regrets all the time. Because I can see there's an issue there, there's an issue to do with parking. People go to us and ask us can they buy a park as most of us can leave their car here while they're going. And it's, it's becoming an issue for us because we have to take it down, otherwise we'd have a full car park all day long. People just want to use it. But the biggest issue for us, maybe, the town council could assist us in some ways. How, how do we stop that kind of problem, before this problem, particularly across the front path?
Can I just add to that? I think it was your lady wife mentioned it to me some time ago. And I've actually raised it, the planning department, because the yard at the side is supposed to be a parking area. And it's never, it's just been full of junk, oil cans, God knows what else in there. They've never used it. It was never properly, it was never practical to use it, I don't believe. But I had a word with the planning about it and they were actually going to look at it because they've had a number of complaints about it.
Think we can trace up and see on the dog's form. Anybody else want to add to that? Yeah, well, we will see what we can do with that one. I mean, just, yeah, it's got, I've seen what you mean and it's, yeah. But we will, we'll trace up the family and see what they say on that side of things. We'll come back to Dennis as well. Yeah?
Can I just ask a bit about my mother's talking about who should be keeping it tidy? And there's a time when I can contact as a member of the public to complain about it.
But the piece in, the piece in George Street or the piece of that island?
On Thacker Road, just before you turn into George Street, it's a little square surrounded by two big walls and the trees, so a big...
That's West Suffolk.
...shower, they're being particularly...
West Suffolk.
That's the one I was complaining about. It's my house behind the walls.
It's a disgrace, it's... It's a disgrace, it's just...
Yeah, we'll give them a trace, see what we can get done for you. Yeah?
On a pair of these pieces, not above walls.
Well, if they don't cut it, they, with the driving weather, someone's gonna throw a cigarette out of a car, and that's gonna blow up. Because I mean, the grass is up about that hole now.
Okay, we're done. Close?
Yeah. Well, it's a part of the ridiculous. You know, you talk about the parking. It's a shame you can't buy the old Bingo site for a car park. I like seeing marked for houses, and you can put houses anywhere in London, half a dozen houses, and people's backyards, etc. But you've got, but we haven't got the lay in the centre of the town for car parking. That is ideal. This gentleman's gonna have problems. You've already had an accident just a few days ago.
Yeah, but that's happened to the department, that's it.
Doug, but the cars are there, and perhaps if the cars haven't been where Norman lives, there might be room for that person to take invasive action. But I cannot understand how, um, I'll take it as Forest Heath District Council that gave the flower pot permission to be turned into a, a takeaway place where there's no parking.
West Suffolk. You were, you were still the council at that time, and it was, um, giving you permission?
I didn't actually firstly, but I'm always, I said about with that, it is, does seem to be ridiculous that they put a, give it a takeaway place, no parking whatsoever. And people do park on that corner. It is dangerous. Even tonight, you've got a big vehicle up there.
Thanks for that.
I think everybody knew that the Bingo Hall site may be a very good car park, but nobody was prepared to pay for it.
Okay, we'll carry on. Okay, I'm number one, correspondence. Um, we don't want to comment, but I'm gonna comment on these, and I think we should be proud of the town, and really thank the, the staff for all the efforts they've put in for the, um, for the benefit we receive. Hopefully, everybody's read them from the, um, Suffolk Festival. Um, it seems to be, you know, they're quite impressed with what we've done, quite happy, so I'm quite, um, pleased to have all of that, so.
I'm sure we need to...
I'm commenting on that. Okay, I'm number ten in accounts. To approve payment for May, uh, twenty twenty-two, I propose second.
Please second.
Okay. Do you want to get, carry on?
Thank you, Mr. Jim. I'm sure there's a...
Oh, sorry, thanks for that.
I'm sure there's an explanation, Graham. Four-foot drag harrow.
Yeah.
Three hundred and forty-three pounds.
Yeah.
Where did we use the drag harrow and what for?
It's for getting rid of the mould wheels down on the children's play area. Apparently, it's the thing to use, getting the moulds.
Was that purchased or hired?
Purchased.
That's purchased, or that's permanently ours then?
Yes.
Okay, and, and number two, quite substantial bill for about sixteen hundred quid for our evolution planning. Um, at what stage are they, and what was that sixteen hundred pound for, Graham?
Without looking at the invoices, I can't honestly say. It was for, um, then sort of, uh, consulting with, um, uh, district and, uh, then meeting themselves.
Right, okay.
I think it was a site visit in there as well. I may have mistaken that, but I'm sure there was a site visit in there as well.
But on that issue, Graham, has anything been done on the archaeology, the archaeology of the issue?
No, they're, they're still, they're still negotiating with West Suffolk about the method which they, um, carry out the, the archaeology. We've got proposals at the moment, um, from them. Um, I think there's three different options, uh, the way they go out about it. There's one is like a full dig or down to a monitoring. Uh, so basically they have someone standing there whilst they're actually constructing or putting the road in.
Because I had, when I was here, and I had an archaeological summary done on the entrance by Dr. Andrews. Yeah, that came into the office as a hard copy, you had one and I had one. I'm not convinced that these people, these project managers have read that.
All that stuff.
Have they read that summary?
Yeah, they've read it.
Because that's what needs to be done before anything else.
Yes.
Because an archaeological, um, body will outrank the planners. And I know the planners will outrank the, the, uh, the people who, this, the, this, this, the, 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 the scheme, who are doing the scheme, I think.
They are, they have been in correspondence with them, I know they have. Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Jim.
I have suggested that to the club that perhaps we should have a cemetery meeting as soon as possible.
Well, I think I've got one plan for, can't remember which date it is, but there's one in Durham, we've now got, uh...
Hopefully, by then they would have given us all the information, the how it got on, which is what we need to know.
Because this summary was really quite specific, well, about the entrance. Because unless we get the entrance, then you can't get on the side.
No, correct.
But, okay, well, well, I'll, I'll monitor and perhaps get some feedback from Graham, but that, thanks for that, Mr. Jim.
As soon as, as soon as we know, it will be passed around to all councillors.
Well, certainly it's a problem we've got, because we really have to get cracking on this, because from the, from the time when the, when the, um, group was put together to deal with the cemetery, from that date to now, the interest rate has almost doubled, and it's not gonna stop yet.
No.
There's, you know, the delay is, is a, an ongoing one.
It is, yeah. The cost, it's hard, isn't it? But yeah, no, we need to get them moving a bit.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments on the accounts? Okay, we'll vote it. Those in favour of the payment? Okay, I'm number eleven, receiving income and express statement against the budget for April twenty twenty-two. Just note that, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay, I'm number twelve, resolution from myself, number four, one, five, Brandon County Council, as well as seek sponsorship for Brandon County Council, it's town council planters. Um, I propose obviously second hand, important. That's a round, I'll just explain it first, or are you unhappy?
Please explain it, Jim.
Yeah, so, I've, I've, I've been obviously with my job as well, I see a little bit more around other towns. And every other town I've been in seem to do something along this lines, the sort of, you know, there's a, you know, to see if any businesses would like to help, um, sponsor a bit of the, you know, some of the costs involved in the, the planting of all our planters, you know, obviously we've got Brandon Bloom that do a very good job around the town, and obviously, we don't wanna let them down, we don't have a massive budget, we do get a, a few, um, plants supplied by West Suffolk, but there's the limit of the amount, and it's sort of just to sort of brighten the town up a bit, really, you know, just, you know, and it's sort of, you know, I've had local businesses approach me, um, that are quite happy to sort of be on board, but I think the proper way to do it is to seek permission from the council to, to sort of, before we go in further with it. So, um, and I, my, my plan was how I sort of think it should work is, obviously, we can, between the town people and the town plant, they can work out what each plant should cost, you know, what costs need to be involved. Obviously, I would, you know, for these businesses, to obviously give us some money, we're not talking about, so the money could be, I must admit, for, for how much money we do have to spend on it, you know, our planters, but, you know, you can be good, you know, I mean, you're quite lucky with the effort that we've put into them. And obviously, we've got a little, there would be a little, some, some sort of little plaque there, state of which business to sponsor them, so at least they get a better recognition out of it as well, which is sort of helps them as well, sort of helping with the community, you know, activities. So, any questions far away?
Thank you, Mr. Jim. Um, I'm all for sponsorship. I mean, I'm hoping that'll exclude, um, the aggregate facility at the station, right, because that is inappropriate.
In theory, they're not branded.
Sorry?
In theory, they're not branded.
Okay, because that would be inappropriate on our behalf to endorse that company because of the aggravation it causes. And I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to tell, tell the councillors about some unpleasant truths about that, uh, company. Because if...
I don't, to be honest, I don't think that's relevant for this resolution, really.
No, but I, I, I'd like to know that, are you, are you in a position to ask him for funds for that?
Oh, my, actually, we will be going to Brandon businesses, and I would say he's...
Well, in that, in that case, I won't insist that you take this into confidential, if you can give me that assurance. Because if you are thinking of going to that, to that company, and I'm not entirely happy that, um, he delivered that sixteen tonnes of sand, he, to be honest with you, um, but that's just my view, but if you've given me an assurance that you'll go to, uh...
I'm going, we're gonna go to Brandon businesses.
Right, and that, 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 so obviously, that's...
That's the last question, shouldn't it?
That'll exclude the man down at the station.
Well, is he a Brandon business?
No, he's not, right, he's a weed...
That's asked us a question.
Right, I'm, I'm, I'll accept that, and I'm happy with that, really. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, well, we've to vote it. So those in favour of the resolution? Yeah, okay. Um, I have number thirteen to approve Brandon Members' Playfield grant request for fifty percent of their allocation. Okay. President, votes, so we'll refer to that, seconded for that, and then we'll discuss. Yeah, okay. Any questions on it before we move to vote? Yeah?
Have we received any assurances that they will alter anything, any of their, the way they, they operate at the moment?
I've received no communications at all, other than the invite for councillors to go and walk around the, uh, playing field.
Yes, which, um, taken it, very kind, yes.
That's the only one that I've received.
But, no, I was just, you know, hearing even more.
Yes.
It's hearsay, that, you know, they're not running it properly. And I think it's quite serious.
Counselor?
We, we clearly haven't heard back from them after a meeting we had with some of their representatives. But they did verbally agree at that meeting that they would sort out this business of the management committee being, becoming fully fledged and equal trustees. That was my main concern, because they were, they've been running contrary to the governing document of the charity thus far. They verbally undertook to do that. I hope they actually get on and do it. If they don't, there's a second instalment to come later, and that will concentrate their minds.
Yeah.
So, under those circumstances, I will vote for paying the first fifty percent, but I'm not lobbying for anybody else to. It's up to you.
Yep, cool.
So, uh, so, um, I just want to, uh, say that, uh, we, um, uh, Graham, you haven't actually, we had a record was taken of the questions that were asked at the time, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yes, you, you took a record. Um, not every councillor was there, so we asked a selection of questions as to what we felt was, uh, important. Uh, each person was able to ask something that they felt was relevant. But we have not received, as you say, I just want to confirm, that was held on the twenty-fifth, Wednesday, the twenty-fifth of May, and here we are, Monday, the thirteenth of June, and we have received nothing in writing to either confirm or even clarify any of the, any of the meeting that took place. Um, as you say, any communication we've had suggests we have a tour of the playing field. Um, well, anyway, I, I don't mean to be rude, most of us can walk down there if we want to have a look at the playing field. Obviously, we'll get extensive tour, but, um, I, I feel that considering we asked quite serious questions, to have no answer back at all in this age of email, I think is quite serious, really. I just want to raise that point. Thank you very much.
Uh, yeah, just one point, um, first of all, I think I was there. I think every question that was asked, whether that was appropriate or not, was answered to the councillors' satisfaction. Am I right or am I wrong?
Wrong.
Wrong.
Wrong, okay, can you explain probably the one that's got the wrong then, please?
I have got a copy of what the questions and the answers were, but a lot of the answers, and I was sitting next door, but one to the gentleman, Mr. Kennedy, who was writing down the notes, and there were an awful lot of things he would get back to us on. The, certainly, the questions were not all answered, most definitely not. Especially to the way that they're, it's run in accordance with the charity commission.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the outstanding ones that I remember. First of all, Brandon Members' Playfield has not had a meeting since we've met, you met, Beth.
That's right.
They've not had a meeting yet.
Right, right.
Okay, okay. Uh, basically, yes, so there'll be sort of resolutions, and, uh, people will be asked to, uh, propose it, second it, and vote with their hands, and call it money. So that would be one of the forms there, and then when we invite people to the, the chair, the, the, the voice chair, and every other members, uh, that are being proposed, seconded, and voted on with a shy of hands, um, and the public trustees, what we call the public trustees, are the ones that are voted on, and that not necessarily associated with any other body, can be voted on en bloc unless anybody has got any objections.
Yes, well, we, we're hearing this from you, but we've heard nothing...
Yeah, well, we're not having a meeting yet. Perhaps you want to come to the next meeting, which will be next Monday, and see if these implicated. Would you like to come to that?
I do believe that we've got something else on then.
Well, we, we have our meeting at the site, I've not got change, I read on there.
I think we're on Monday.
No, isn't it that, isn't there a, isn't that workshop, is that workshop?
Okay, but we've, 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 you, you, everybody's been invited to a tour, and I'm sure you can ask any more questions, uh, on, on that tour, of the situation.
Over the turn of the meeting next to my left.
Good.
Okay, is that all right?
Okay, yeah, right on, that's all right. And you can, you can see how that would be done, that. I, I don't think there's any other, eh, major issues than just, just wording and the shying of the hands, or can be something else that was wrong.
Well, it's hearsay, so I'd rather not mention it.
Hearsay, no, no, I'm, I'm, no, I'm, I'm...
I, it's such, to such an extent that I think there's something not, it's not operating correctly, because there is some, um, something from, uh, members of staff that we've been told one thing, they've said another, it, it, there's not, something is not right, I mean, it's not being run effectively. For instance, I understand that the West Suffolk or Abercote, whichever, pay a pound a year for the use, for the, the lease of the leisure centre.
They don't lease anything.
Well, what's that pound a year then?
They own.
Why do they...
No, they don't.
No, they don't get a pound a year, they, they, they sold for a pound.
That's not what one of your members, one of your trustees said at the meeting.
Well, I'm not aware of a pound a year coming from them.
At the meeting, it was saying a pound a year.
It was, I was confirmed that. The, the, these questions, and I think that they need to be answered.
First of all, all the leisure centre and the medical centre is a hundred, a hundred percent owned by West Suffolk County. Sold, and that idea was there, because I think it's the secretary when that was sold. Am I right?
Um, I would have to check, I don't, I, I was, I took the minutes, and I was the secretary, however, I don't actually remember us agreeing to sell it for that amount of money.
Well, that, 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 that...
My, my involvement was to, to, uh, take the minutes, and what I was mainly concerned with was dealing with the manager at the time. And so I, I cannot say, I do remember taking any minutes to say that we agreed to sell it. Uh, what happened was, if you wish to, no, as, as I remember, which obviously is about, we're talking about twenty-five plus years ago, um, is that, uh, Forest Heath decided that they wished to take it over when the manager was sacked. They wished to take it over, and we're an amateur committee, and, uh, we had no, we were, we had no choice as to what we did. None of us, there wasn't any choice, we weren't given an option.
Now, Gary Bottler's done Freedom Information Act, right, uh, to say who owns that building and what rights they have, and that came back, all the paperwork to say that they owned it one hundred percent, and that was signed with five, uh, councillors here, I think, and Brandon Members' Playfield councillors, and did twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven years ago. Okay, the car park areas are still owned by Brandon Members' Playfields, but they are allowed to be used, they can use all that access in that car park, right, providing they maintain it, and they do maintain it. They've done the street works this year and have repaired the road. Okay, the small car park on the side of the building up to the tennis court... Okay, the small car park on the side of the building up to the tennis court, they own as well. Okay, the tennis court we own, right? They administer it, okay? And because they administer it, because there's somebody there all the time. Okay, so somebody wants to go and play tennis, for example, they go and see them, they take the fee and they keep the perception for the rest of us.
Yeah, that's the other thing, I don't think all these fees that are paid into the playing fields actually show on your financial statements.
No, they're usually paid annually.
It doesn't matter how it's paid, what I'm saying is that you're, from looking at your finances, you are not making the most of your assets. You're living off a large percentage of our precept, which is, and I don't disagree with paying. Something I think the council should do, so I'm not, I'm not fighting against you. But I would like to see some better records from the playing fields.
Okay, you've got to remember is Brandon Members' Playfield is charity.
Yes.
It's not a business.
No.
Right?
But you're still obliged, as a charity, to make the best of it.
It's an amenity.
Yes.
Amenities, they don't necessarily make money.
No.
They depend on money from other people.
I think you'll have to, yes, but you're also, as a charity, and if you speak to the charity commission, they will tell you, you have to make the best of what you can. I know, because in the cause, I can't just rely on charity.
You do make the best, there's lots of things.
No, I don't think you do.
You don't?
No.
Okay.
Can I, can I just, sorry?
Yeah, you say you're going on, Clark, Gary, you have to say something.
Yes, I'm sorry, to keep away, so what I was going to say is, it's all very, you know, you've come and answered these questions. I have to say, first of all, we've got nothing in writing to refer to, we have to rely on our memory, which is not the best end.
No, 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 no.
And secondly, you're answering questions, you are many one trustee of the, and thirdly, the person who did the talking was not the chairman of your trustees.
Right, can I add that, first of all, one. The meeting was recorded, I'm afraid you've got that wrong. Okay, am I right?
It was recorded for notation.
Right, it was recorded, okay, so I just, you know, we're lying then, it was recorded, okay? So that's like that. If you're unhappy with anything in particular, you need to tell us because everything we replied, you was happy with, and everything you said, we're going to implement. So I don't think where we should be replying back to you, because we haven't implemented it all yet. But well, we listen to what you say and the reason behind it, and we're going to take action on it. Okay, but we're not going to start charging, say that like, we charge, we charge, for example, the scopes fifteen pounds a year for using that land. We're not going to go to them and say, oh, that's too cheap, we've got to pay you a hundred pounds a year. Then they've got to pass it on to their, to their people, all volunteers. They have to put the charges up for the scopes and the guys that do that. Where does that lead? Brandon Town Health is paying a lot less every year, and less scopes and cars perhaps, or some charges. So you've got to think along the lines.
What about the sports and social club though?
The sports and social club, yeah, that's rented out. At least they.
They don't pay.
Yes, they do.
Doesn't show on your, doesn't show on your finances.
Well, yes, because you looked at the last years and they didn't charge them in the Covid period, because they didn't use it.
Well, didn't.
No, this is, this is what I'm getting at, councillor, I think it's not transparent enough. I'm not, I'm not saying that we should not support, I think we should. But I think, and the charity commission, if they got hold of it, would expect more transparency, I can promise you. I've had experience of them.
And being a charity, they would need the accountability here.
Clarke's waiting on an answer for something going on.
Thank you. I'd like just to bring to attention, everyone, that before the majority of councillors who sit today, when chair was elected on, back when I, and other councillors, Peter, Victor and David were sitting, we queried, council queried that things at the Remembrance Field, all that time ago. Nothing was ever taken. There was councillors that, I don't sit here anymore, querying stuff in relation to the Remembrance Playfield and the charity. No one done anything. Clerk sat there then, and nothing was, nothing was queried. Me as a councillor is still unsure of what this allegation is. I haven't been fielding, I have not a clue what you're, what, or whatever the situation here. So I personally, I was one of those that queried the Remembrance Field and certain things that went on down there. But we continued to pay them, and we have done so. So I backed with Van, councillor Van, that we paid for the consent. And what you guys are asking to, for allowing the Remembrance Field to catch up with your requests. And then the next victim sent, we can question.
That's what we need.
Yeah, that's what I would move there.
Well, certainly, if we paid them the fifty percent now, they're keeping liquid. And the remaining fifty percent, the second instalment, if they haven't fulfilled any of their, their promises, well, that might concentrate their mind a bit.
Well, I'm sure, yes, I'm sure councillor Palmer would probably agree, that once these, once you've had your meetings and you've implemented everything, I'm sure we're going to get something back to say that this has been.
Yeah.
Yeah? Yeah?
Well, thank you, I went to this meeting and there was a few anomalies, it wasn't perfect. But Brandon Town Council is not perfect, is it? We're all amateurs, there is anomalies. I mean, thirty thousand pounds, I think is reasonable value for money. Half that is the wage of one person, so that leaves them fifteen grand for the running costs. Nobody complains about facilities down there. And my vote to support the approval of the payment. And like, there's been some consensus about the second payment, let's get them paid and and get on with the meeting. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Well, we'll move to vote there, I'm fine, yeah, I'm happy to. Yeah, okay, those in favour, those in favour of paying, being half paying or paying.
Give us a name vote, please.
Councillor White, votes?
Right, so we've got.
Councillor White, then.
I think what you do, Graham, you shout out the name.
Yeah, do it like that.
And then, and then that's for or against. So there's.
We really want to know.
We can start, the council.
Yes.
Or you do, you have to have a name to vote.
Because councillor Palmer has asked for it. Any councillor has the right to.
So you can hit itself.
Any councillor is allowed to ask a name, if you feel you want to. Okay, I'll give the women names for you. Yeah, we're going to go, councillor White then first. Four, yeah, four. Councillor Kenny?
Four.
Councillor Atkins?
Four.
Councillor Palmer?
Four.
Councillor Hughes?
Four.
Myself?
Four.
Councillor Neil?
Four.
Yeah. Councillor Moore?
Four.
Councillor Brabbs?
Against.
Councillor Everington?
Against.
Yeah, councillor Van?
Four.
Councillor Ridgwell?
Four.
I'd say that's passed. Okay, I'm number fourteen, to note the minutes, the planning committee held on the sixth of June, so just note that. Okay, I'm number fifteen, for a review of inventory and land and assets. They should have been achieved in the final debate, if you get that one.
This is, I just say, this is a pain in the butt. Um, because the provision didn't add up, but it did, this is just a revamp of last year's sheet. Councillor Kenny, it's nothing more than a rework of last year's sheet of bits and pieces in red that were added this year.
And, I'm going to ask you a question, just repeat that again now.
Right, this is a revamp of last year's sheet with the additional items added that we had purchased in last year.
Okay, yeah, yeah, this is an asset.
It's literally, it's just literally, it's noted.
Yeah, okay, I accept, I accept the explanation, Graham.
Yes, but you can bring it and ask a question.
Graham, our pre-terms agenda is this, it isn't the price you pay for it. So are you saying now, well, take the break?
That's what we paid for it. That's what, that's what's on the invoices.
That was fifteen.
Yeah, but don't forget you've got the V A two and everything else on top.
Yeah, but you try to tell me it's still worth the same money as today?
Yeah, we don't depreciate, I think.
Well, having other business, I know depreciate.
Yes, I realise that, and that's what I've thrown me over the, over the years, is that how much do you depreciate it?
Well, there are set guidelines.
I've never been, I was told it doesn't depreciate, you just leave it at that value.
So when you sell something, for example, the pickup truck, it comes as a massive loss?
Yes. Well, all I've done is revamp what we had last year, we did last year.
You just regurgitate it, yeah.
That's all I've done, that's all I've done, councillor.
Councillor Everington?
Could you tell me what a garden rummy is?
That's the thing out in the back of the old school house, I can't.
Old shed?
Yeah, it's got windows in it, it's windows in it, so I. I made it a little bit closer. I apologise for that, yes, yes.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Back as to why the garage rental's still on the balance sheet, five hundred pounds per annum, when we've shared responsibility of that quite some time back.
Garage print?
Yeah, page two on the.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that's, right, that's an issue, right. All we've done is use that same heading, it's the building at.
The Loos, the Loos.
The Brandon Playfield, we're paying five hundred pounds a year.
Okay, so it's nothing to do with the garage.
Just come to the same heading, because it's setting the account of that heading.
Good, you've answered my question, Graham. And we'll go away now, thank you.
Right, so I propose the asset register, seconded for me, councillor Everington. So this is a quick vote for, set to that, so those in favour? Looks like everybody. Okay, I'm number sixteen, resolution to exclude the public press. Pursuant to the Public Volumes Admissions Amendments Act nineteen sixty, the public press be excluded from the temporarily losing to the confidential to be discussed concerning points land, staff or contracts. I want the vote. Okay, those in favour? Got everybody down?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Let's get that turned off.
Thanks, Jackie.